I'm Maharaj and I'm a professor adjutant of leadership and politics of education at the University of Ottawa. And one day, when my language skills are good enough, I will be able to deliver the rest of the presentation in French. But for today, we'll be proceeding in English. But as was mentioned, if anyone has any questions, feel free to contribute in French. And if I can understand, I'll respond in English or maybe I'll get some help from Manahil to translate. Okay, so we're going to proceed. I'm going to start by sharing my screen. So I've titled this talk Caught in the Middle: The Precarious Nature of Ontario School Boards. And I mean caught in the middle in sort of two different senses. And you'll see that as we proceed throughout the presentation. So I'll start off by asking a very simple question. We're talking about Ontario school boards. How many publicly funded school boards do we have in Ontario currently? Who can tell me?
Seventy-two.
Correct, so we have seventy-two publicly funded boards. Good job, you get a prize at the end. So there's thirty-one English public, twenty-nine English Catholic, eight French Catholic and four French public. Okay, great. Now, a much more difficult question. How many school boards did we have in Ontario in, say, the 1960s?
I knew the French ones weren't there back then. They got the right to be, to have their own boards in the 90s, but that's the extent of my knowledge.
Okay, all right.
I think a hundred and fifty. I'm gonna make a long guess.
So you're about an order of magnitude off. It was roughly three thousand five hundred. At one point up to three thousand seven hundred, I think, is the highest number I've seen. So you might be asking yourself, how is that possible? How is it that we have seventy-two school boards now and we had thousands, right, a few decades ago? And the answer is, when we talk about school boards, the meaning of that has changed quite considerably over time, right? The type of school boards that existed historically weren't the large administrative units that you see today, right? They weren't school systems as such in much of the same way. And so to demonstrate this, I refer back to a famous painting. And this wasn't done in Ontario, it was done in Prince Edward Island, but I think it's illustrative. So it's called A Meeting of the School Trustees. And it was done by Robert Harris. It depicts a school board meeting in Prince Edward Island. So it's a famous painting. It was made more famous actually by, it was turned into one of those heritage moments. I don't know if you guys remember those commercials from back in the 90s where they depict some significant part of Canadian history. So I'm just gonna share that video with you because I think it's illustrative of what school boards say were like historically. Okay, so let me just pull that up.
Children.
You must understand, young woman, that you work for us and not the other way around.
But you would like to tell me how I must go about teaching the children to read.
I've told you what it is we want you to do, and that's enough.
Please, Mr. Clarence, would you take a look at this?
You'll not bother me with that.
Well, could you see, sir, your son read this today? It is quite a difficult passage. It is from the Bible. This is what I use to teach him to read.
Ah, Mr. Clarence, why don't you just read it then? Both of you know I cannot read a word.
Throughout most of our history, millions of Canadians have owed their education to young women who taught in one-room schoolhouses much like this one.
So when we talk about school boards, historically, we were talking more so of the way a board of, say, an independent school or a private school must, might operate, right? So they're not overseeing systems of schools. It's more so like a school or a handful of school or something like that. So I think it's important to keep that in mind. Now, in terms of bringing it up to the more present date, I'm going to go through some recent trends in Canadian education governance over the past few years. So in 2018, we see that Nova Scotia dissolves its school boards. And now the administrative units that exist are appointed directly and accountable to the province as opposed to local boards. And then in 2020, Quebec gets rid of its French-language school boards, turning them into service centers. They have a sort of a different model that I'll talk a bit about later. It's not, it's very different from Nova Scotia. There is, it's more like there, it's like a delegated model where different stakeholder groups sort of have representation on these service centers. But that's in 2020. In 2021, continuing the trend, Manitoba introduced a reform bill to similarly get rid of its elected school boards. What was really interesting about the Manitoba's case is that there was a really pronounced backlash to these plans. There was a concerted effort to fight this reform. People started lobbying their local representatives and they put long, you know, lawn signs, save our school boards, all that sort of stuff, to the point where the Manitoba government actually shelved the plans and backtracked. Now, more recently, just this year, in Quebec, there's been the introduction to centralize more power in the hands of the provincial government. So, so that the heads of the service centers would be more directly accountable to the education minister and to the ministry itself. We see a similar thing happening in New Brunswick. So New Brunswick has, they're not called school boards, but they're kind of like school boards, these district education councils. And so the reforms being introduced there would similarly give the minister the power to appoint the superintendents, the head administrative officers of each of the districts in the province. And bringing it back into Ontario, we have reforms in Ontario similarly centralizing more power in the hands of the minister and the provincial government. When you go back actually in such a short period of time, it almost makes me wonder, like, kind of what's going on? Is each province coming to these conclusions independently? Are they having some secret, like, CMEC meeting where they all sort of craft this plan to centralize more power? Why might this be happening? And we'll talk a bit about that a bit later. Okay, so in terms of the evolution of school boards, I mentioned, you know, referring back to the painting that they've grown in complexity. I think it's instructive to look historically, the changes in what we've expected schools to do, right? And the role of teachers and people working within the school system. So here is a copy of the official teacher licensing exam for teachers in the province of Ontario in 1871. So at the time, it was thought that we need to professionalize teaching in Ontario. And so instead of school boards all just kind of doing their own certification and training, we need to have one provincial exam for all teachers in Ontario to make sure they're up to a certain standard. And you can see, you know, echoes of that reform in the math examinations that teachers have to take. And in the 2000s, there was the introduction of a teacher licensing exam, a much more standardized version. So we see these reforms kind of come back and reemerge. But back in 1871, it's like, we're going to professionalize teaching. We can't really trust the school boards through this, but this is what we want all teachers to know. Now, I'm going to zoom in a bit on some of the questions to give you a sense of what it was thought kind of was really important for a teacher to know and be able to do, right? So just look at the first, this is the very first question, right? So obviously, this would be of prime importance. It says, describe a schoolhouse for an average attendance of eighty pupils as to size, furniture and school apparatus, right? So it's basically like, how would you arrange the desks and the tables and that sort of thing? And you might think, oh, man, back in the 1800s, they had no idea about education. I was actually asked this question when I applied to Teachers College and I was called for an interview. They asked me a question about that, how would I arrange the desks and that sort of thing. But, but that was viewed as really important. And then question four, how would you deal with the following cases? One, willful disobedience. Two, injury to school property. Three, this is probably my favorite one, habitual idleness. And then fourth, habitual tardiness, right? So you get this sense of the role of the teacher here is a lot having to do with like maintaining order and discipline and structure and that sort of thing. And that is, right, that is, we've moved quite far from that, I'd say, in terms of what we currently expect schools and teachers and school systems to be able to do, right? It's become much more complicated. Now, I'm going to refer now to the current version of Ontario's Education Act. These are all the things that school boards are expected to do and be responsible for in 2023, right? So, and this is not the whole list, this is just what I could fit on the slide. Student achievement, wellbeing, bullying, special education, establishing school councils, providing computer programming, maintaining playgrounds, rinks, putting on school fairs, managing school buses, creating a positive school climate, equity and inclusion, nutrition, athletics, cadet programs, providing continuing education, managing and co-managing childcare centers, the provision of public lectures. And then probably my favorite is school boards are responsible for purchasing and making available milk to all their students. I always wondered when I was growing up, you know, I dutifully drank three glasses of milk a day and I felt very good about it because I was being, you know, reinforced in the school system that I was doing a great thing for me. And then it was only later on, I'm like, so how did that happen? Do I need three glasses of milk today? You know, did the dairy lobby get in there? Like, what was going on? But anyway, milk is in there. Now, at the top, I've, I've put the years next to four of the expectation. So one is student achievement and wellbeing. So that gets introduced in the Education Act in 2009 as kind of a focusing feature of the school system. You know, if we go back in previous decades, in the 90s, 80s, when school boards were a lot more autonomous, there was no sense of kind of what they were working towards necessarily, or no sense of how you could describe that provincially because they were all sort of doing their own thing in a lot, in a lot of ways, right? And depending on the school board and the leadership, that was, it wasn't very coordinated from a provincial perspective. And now you could say there are advantages to that, they're able to adapt more so to their local communities. But it was very hard for the province or anyone in charge provincially to kind of say with any confidence what was going on in the school system. So in 2009, we get this idea that we're going to focus primarily on student achievement and wellbeing. Now, even just those two goals, depending on how you conceptualize what that means, they, maybe those could be at odds with each other in some sense, right? You could, there are systems in the world that are very high achieving according to, you know, different tests, international tests, national tests, right? Students do really well in a lot of subjects, but maybe that comes at the cost of their wellbeing, right? A lot of these systems also have students that have high levels of anxiety, depression, teenage suicide and that sort of stuff. So sometimes those can exist in tension with each other. But then in 2012, we get the obligation for schools to engender a positive school climate and focus on equity and inclusion, right? And so in some sense, depending on what you prioritize, you might not be able to meet all of these expectations all at the same time, right? Because you can't, you can't focus on everything, right? If you're focusing on everything, then you're not really focusing on anything. So that's just important to keep in mind when we consider some of the current tensions in the system. Now, in terms of school trustees, the members of school boards themselves, there have been reforms to that as well. So in 2009, reforms to the Education Act get introduced that say that school board members have to entrust the day-to-day management of the board to its staff through the director. So not get too involved in the day-to-day operations of the school. And again, maintain that focus on student achievement and wellbeing. That should be the goal, that should be what they're focusing on. And then there have been other guidance that has been provided provincially to kind of more narrowly circumscribe the role of trustees and boards. So there was an operational review guide for Ontario boards, basically telling trustees to again be more hands-off from administration, they shouldn't be involved in any of the hiring decisions other than the Director of Education. There was a review of the Toronto District School Board in 2015 that found that trustees in that board were still very much involved in administrative matters, particularly at local schools, and sort of criticized them for that. And then we have the current Better Schools and Student Outcomes Act, which sort of centralizes more things in the hands of the province. And we'll, we'll talk about, a bit more about the rationale behind that. So it's important to note that in the last decade, there were several interventions by the provincial government into school boards largely because of their perceived failures to address issues of equity and racism, particularly anti-black racism in a lot of cases. Now, these were, these were all in the Greater Toronto Area, but because of, I think a large, because of the media tension they receive, you know, being, being located in Toronto and all that sort of stuff, it really set the tone for the rest of the province in terms of what the priorities of school boards should be. And in response, in response to these interventions, and some of them are quite significant, right? A lot of them were placed under external review, almost all of them had their senior leadership replaced. And so no school board leader in the rest of the province wants to become one of these examples, right? You don't want to get, you know, lose your job and, and have all that scrutiny and quite frankly, shame visited upon your, your school district. So this really set an example for other school boards across the province. And to their credit, school boards have responded in a number of ways to address, you know, some of these issues of equity and just broader issues of social justice, right? To give some examples, this is from some research that I've been doing alongside Chuka Obiadi, who's a graduate student at U Ottawa, I think he's here. So he's been working on this project where we've been looking at some of the different equity initiatives in different boards across the province. So this is from the Ottawa Carlton Board, setting up a center of excellence to help black students, students of African and Caribbean descent to better navigate the school system and improve their educational opportunities. You have a similar initiative in the Waterloo Board, right? Basically setting up advocates for black students and families and communities to navigate the, the system and the anti-black racism that they might face. You have pretty comprehensive plans and policies to address anti-black racism in other boards. So this is from the Durham District School Board. And then of probably most important note, the, the boards that were placed under investigations themselves have responded in various ways. So the Peel District School Board probably has the most comprehensive strategy to address anti-black racism that we've seen in that they actually have metrics and measures in a lot of different areas that they're, that's supposed to be used to hold themselves accountable for making progress in all of these different areas. In most boards, there's just sort of commitments, but, but here there's actually sort of more concrete measures that can be tracked over time. The York Region Board, similar thing, has a multifaceted anti-black racism strategy. And then the same thing with the Toronto District School Board. And in the case of the Toronto District School Board, there's plans to address, you know, other forms of discrimination as well. Probably the most notable recent one is their plan to address caste-based discrimination in the school, school system, right? So my point is that in many ways, boards have taken this commitment to equity and social justice more seriously than they, than they have in the past, right? They, they've really put forward a concerted effort. In a lot of cases, the leadership of these, these boards have been hired with explicit commitments to address these areas as opposed to just the traditional metrics of just improving student achievement that had been in place. Now, in terms of the, the role that school boards play in the system, this draws on some previous research I did where I talked to school board trustees to get a sense of how they view their roles and the role of the boards. And there were kind of three things that, that came out. So one of them is local input. So if you have a very large, complex, you know, system that you do here in Ontario, the idea is that you need input from local communities because they're so different, right? So, so in some of the comments, you'll see, you know, rural and northern boards have particular needs that are different than in large urban centers. In the second comment, the person said, decisions on how to best support student success and achievement cannot be dictated from the high perch of the Ministry of Education. A lot of Toronto resentment, by the way, kind of comes across in a lot of these things, right? That what happens in, in Toronto is used to make decisions for the entire province and the people working at the Ministry of Education all sort of live there and don't really understand the, the local context all over the province. So that was one, one facet of it. The second was accountability and advocacy. So this idea of reducing the principal agent problem so that boards are saying they're doing one thing, but are they actually doing that? Well, you need someone in the local community who can check, right? Is what's actually happening in schools? And then I thought the second comment was interesting. The larger the board, the fewer the people at the top of the system per student. So trying to get the attention of those at the top to address local problems is an issue. So again, boards have become these large, complex systems, right? It's not like in that painting where it's a bunch of people overlooking one school or maybe a handful of school. You know, in the case of TDSB, it's hundreds and hundreds of schools, right? So how do you have, you have this large bureaucracy managing the system, but then can the actual realities on the ground sort of get lost, right? Because the system is so large, while you have this local check, someone who lives in the local community who can kind of monitor things, right? And bring those, bring the attention of the board to bear on local issues. And then the last one is trustees felt they were being used as a buffer. So this person said, the ministry does not respect trustees, but wants us, wants to blame us or blame, wants us to blame when things don't go right. And this image on the right, so this actually comes from this study I'm doing in Nova Scotia where one participant described boards as the heat shield that provinces use to sort of protect themselves from criticism when, you know, people are upset in certain educational decisions. So the example used is, you know, based on the way policies are constructed, the province might say, we need to close schools in the province, but we, the province, aren't actually going to do that. We're going to task the local school board with conducting the process and selecting the schools. And, and so when people are really upset about these school closures, they can say, well, don't blame us. We didn't, we didn't close the schools, it was your local school board that closed the schools, right? Get, get mad at them. I actually typed in heat shield to one of those AI image generators, DALL-E. And this is what it came up with, which I thought was kind of cool looking. So there it is in the presentation. But it relates to what I think has been happening more recently in, in Ontario. So that's this idea of boards coming under fire, as I'm calling it. Now, I gotta tell you, I'm probably, I think, one of a handful of people in the province that actually used to watch school board meetings and like attend school board meetings just because I was interested in the way that they function. And for the longest time, these things were like sleepy affairs that nobody really showed up to, right? Like that you might have some delegations that present on particular issues, but the public wasn't really paying much attention at all, right? There'd be empty chairs for the most part. And, and I mean, that was one of the criticisms of school boards was that people weren't really engaging democratically with them. So, right, how legitimate are they? Now, in a lot of boards, that has completely changed, right? You have a, things have become much more contentious, a lot of these school board meetings. On the left there, you can see at, at the Waterloo Board, you have members of boards facing death threats and getting their cars vandalized and all that sort of stuff, largely over issues of gender and sexuality. Similar thing in the Ottawa Carlton Board. I mean, I don't know if you've seen any of those board meetings, but it, it's crazy, right? Like it, there's no, it's standing room only, right? In a lot of cases where people are shouting things, it's crowded, they've had to call the police a number of times and considered ways to sort of limit public participation in many ways because it's getting out of hand in a lot of cases. So the, the boards have become under fire and under increased public scrutiny in a number of ways. But they've also come under fire from the province itself, right? So in recent cases, you've had the Education Minister, Stephen Leche, you know, criticizing the Halton Board for an issue with, with having to do with a teacher's appearance and dress. And, you know, in the board, in their approach was saying, look, we're trying to model principles of equity and inclusion for both staff, students and community. And they're getting criticized from that, not just from, you know, certain parents and members of the community, but from the province itself. And then a similar thing recently with Ottawa Carlton Board, having to do with allowing people in uniform, police officers in school and that sort of stuff, right? So boards are under fire kind of from multiple directions. Now, that brings us to the most recent reform, which is the Better Schools and Student Outcomes Act. And so in justifying the need for the act, the Minister of Education have said, has said, boards need to refocus on what matters, which is student achievement, which sort of begs the question, okay, so refocus like, okay, to student achievement, but from what? What is it that they're focusing on now that is sort of an issue? So a second quote, send a signal to school boards to refocus their energies. So there's refocus again, on what matters most, which is improving reading, writing, math skills and STEM education. So there we get a much more concrete distillation of what is meant here, right? So it's not just student achievement, it's student achievement on these sort of traditional subjects, right? Now, for school boards and the members of the Ontario Public School Boards Association have responded and different groups have responded, they're kind of like, well, wait a minute, right? Like just a few years ago, we were all getting taken over, well, not all, but there was a number of high-profile cases where school boards were getting taken over for not addressing issues of equity and inclusion and social justice. And we're doing that, like, look at our plans that we're doing and we're trying to model it in the case of the Halton Board. And now you're saying, well, no, no, no. Basically, what's implied here is you don't prioritize that stuff. We need to go back to, quote unquote, back to basics sort of approach, right? Focusing on, on these traditional subjects, STEM education in particular. Now, I will say, in the defense of the Minister and the province, there are not insignificant members of the public and parents and even teachers who feel this way, who share this view, right? I, I've talked to teachers, both currently in the system, but also teacher education candidates and students that I teach, who will say things like, you know, we'll, we'll be talking about issues of social justice and culturally responsive pedagogy and stuff like that. And they'll say things like, look, teachers are being asked to do so many things now, right? Like, if I, if I go back to that list of expectations of school boards, that's just what's in the Education Act, right? Teachers are also expected to make sure students are physically active and make sure they have financial literacy. And increasingly now, teachers are going to be asked to have increased training on promoting, you know, mental health. And there was, you know, social emotional learning has been a big initiative. And so with all that stuff, there's a lot of teachers who are like, look, I have a hard enough time just teaching chemistry, let alone doing all this other stuff. So maybe, you know, we need to go sort of back to the basics and focus and, and focus on those skills. So it's not like the province is just doing this, like going rogue or something like that. There, there, there are elements of the public and within the school system that agree with a sort of back-to-basics approach. But again, if you're shifting the focus back to basics and back on traditional measures of student achievement, that means we're sort of de-emphasizing what was emphasized previously, which is issues of equity and, and social justice. However, I think actually, this is not really the story of what's going on here, right? I think what actually the story, what the story is, came out in a recent interview that the Education Minister did on an episode of TVO's The Agenda. And here's what he said. He said, because the, the host, Steve Payton, was asking him, like, why do you need these increased powers, right? Like, what's, what's the problem? And he said, quote, "I'm the Minister of Education for all Ontario students." And yet, as Minister, very powerful- And yet, as minister, very powerful title, and yet, in actual application, I am unable to set up province-wide expectations. In what other ministry is power so devolved away from elected provincial government? I think this is the real story, that's maybe going a little bit under the radar. And is that it's just part of the increased trend to centralize more power and decision-making in the hands of the minister, the minister, the deputy minister, the Ministry of Education, and the province in in general. And in my, in looking at what's been happening in other provinces, we see that the similar trend, and even in, this is probably the most candid a minister has been, but in all the other cases, there's similar language, right? We need to streamline decision-making, we need to make it more efficient and and accountable. But the effect is to just centralize more power in the hands of of the Minister of Education. So I think that is really kind of what the intention of this act is. So if we take kind of the overarching story of Ontario school boards and the the set of reforms, we see that going back a few decades, school boards were in charge of a lot of things. They were previously setting their own curriculum. They were in charge of fun, funding through, they could levy local education levies through the the property tax system. They engage, as the direct employer of teachers, they engaged in collective bargaining, right, for all of their employees. They had the ability to set their own local priorities and the ability to exercise oversight over their administration. Increasingly now, that is gone, okay, in large part. I mean, curriculum's gone, funding's gone. If we go back to even administrative oversight, increasingly with this new legislation, that is being taken over more by the province. The province is going to have the ability to set up training and evaluate the directors of of education. So more and more, that has been taken over by the province. So these things have shifted away from the school boards towards the province, which then sort of begs the question, if all this stuff that school boards used to do is now being done by the province, then what's the point of school boards, right? What purpose do they serve? Provinces as well, like going back to the Nova Scotia example. What seems to have happened is over time, and maybe Paul can speak to this, is that the role of school trustees and school boards became increasingly narrowed and and circumscribed over time, right? In twenty twelve, there was legislation that told school boards and trustees that they had to respect the authority of school superintendents to run the school system, right? That's actually in the language that was inserted in into the Education Act. But then in twenty fifteen, those so, those same school boards were criticized in an auditor general auditor generals report for being rubber stamps of school superintendents. So it's like, well, like, what, what is it, right? You're telling me to be more hands-off, and now you're saying we're rubber stamps. And so, and that set the stage for getting rid of school boards entirely, right? Getting rid of school boards entirely. And so you can see a similar thing with Ontario school boards is as their positions become more circumscribed, more narrowed, it's kind of like, well, then what what purpose do we serve? So what's the future of Ontario school boards? What, what could happen? I don't have a crystal ball, and I think it's sort of foolish to make predictions, but here are some possibilities. So could we see a different model, right? So instead of being democratically elected, could the the way school boards are constituted change? And so in the Quebec case, what happened, at least for the the French service centers, as as they're being called, is there was not, they weren't, the members that oversaw the service centers weren't popularly popularly elected, but they had representation from different stakeholder groups. So staff could select staff representatives, right? A certain amount of staff representatives. Parents could then select amongst themselves, parent representatives. So there's some kind of democratic processes in place, they're just not popularly elected. And then there was community representatives as well that were appointed, right? So that's kind of one route that we could go, just change the the makeup and the way school boards sort of function. Could it go the route of New Brunswick, where they're locally elected, but they don't actually have any power? They're, right, they're just completely advisory. Increasingly, that power, like I said, has been centralized in the hands of the province. But you could just go completely all the way and say, you can give your input, but to the to the provincial government or the Ministry of Education or the minister, but it's completely advisory. Or could we follow the route of of Quebec and Nova Scotia and just get rid of them entirely? So I was on an episode of The Agenda a couple of years ago and with alongside former Education Minister John Snobelin. And he admitted on the show that he had a plan to just get rid of school boards twenty-five years ago. That was what he wanted to do, but he he wasn't able to push it through because of all these other reforms that the province was doing at the time. But that was the plan at the time. So it's not inconceivable that we could just see school boards, you know, elected school boards just disappear entirely. It's happened in other provinces and and it could happen here, right? But another possibility is, could we see some element of renewal, right? Going back to the Manitoba case, it was pretty amazing to see the public really come out in full force in in defense of Ontario or 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 school boards in in Manitoba, right? Could we see a similar thing in Ontario? I mean, I don't know, it's it's possible. Could there be, could school boards be reimagined in in some sense in terms of not just their 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 structures and the role they serve, but but just their 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 function? Like, one of the things that was really interesting in the Nova Scotia case is in addition to spots being popularly elected, there were seats on the different boards for African Nova Scotians and 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 MCMO citizens, like an indigenous representative on on the boards, which was, I guess, sort of complicated for the elections body in in Nova Scotia to actually administer, because you have to determine who's eligible to vote, right? For which subgroup and all that sort of stuff. But what's interesting about that is it provides kind of an opportunity if if we are serious about reconciliation and addressing anti-black racism and and aspects of social justice, it created kind of like a caucus within the province that can legitimately speak to some of those issues. So there's all sorts of possibilities and where in in terms of the way the role and and the role that they play in the system could be reimagined. But in terms of what will actually happen, I'm not sure, we we will see. All right, and with, I'll leave it at that. So mercy, thank you for your time, and we can turn it over to any questions or comments.